Hi Dave. Can you hear me okay? Dave Pestejo? You're muted.
Okay, I had my volume down. You were talking to yourself.
Yeah, no, I was talking to you and you had your volume down. The CEO.
You too.
I'm gonna go get a beverage. I'm gonna go get a whiskey. Alright. Hi Jordan.
Hello everyone. Hector, are you able to open the PowerPoint from your computer tonight?
Are you having trouble with it? Okay.
I am.
Jordan, I'm not expecting Council Perry Miller tonight, but have you heard anything from Greider?
Greider is out sick tonight.
That's right. She sent, she did send me an email earlier. Just before I go on, my, my email got a little jumbled up, so if I can't figure it out, I'll get in touch with you in the morning. I'm gonna play with it after, after the meeting. Okay. So it looks like all the councilors are here. Hector, are you ready?
Ready.
Or Lucero, are you ready?
Yes ma'am, we're ready.
Great, here we go. So we'll go ahead and call the Talent City Council Regular Meeting of November 16th. Order, roll call please.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Penamorif.
Here.
Councilor Pestejo.
Here.
And Councilor Byers.
Here.
Mayor Ayers Flood.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you Hector. The next item on the agenda is meeting accessibility. Lucero?
This is a question for the public. If anybody would like this meeting translated into Spanish, we ask that you raise your hand now. Yes, this is a pregunta para público. Si alguien necesita responder, y no interpretar en español por favor, así es humano hoy. And we'll watch the attendees for raise hands, mayor.
Thank you Hector, I want to make sure I get this right moving forward. I, last, last week I called Hector and got Lucero, this week I called Lucero and got Hector.
Apologies, we're, we're kind of trading off as a, and you know, as we get closer to handing over all the duties, I think it's a, it can be a little nerve wracking.
Okay, no problem. I will from now on just hand it off to staff and let you guys take it from there. Alright, so item number three is additions and corrections to the agenda. Anybody? Alright, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move on to number four is community announcements. Staff, do you have any community announcements?
Mayor, I have several. You should be able to see a list on your screen. Rogue Food Unites continues to have a free farmers market with organic food at the OSF production facility on Talon Avenue. This weekend, the 19th, El Mercadito will be at the Talent Community Center. And I know that Mayor Ayers Flood in your other role as the president of the Talent Business Alliance, if you'd like to add anything about the events.
Sorry, Mayor, you're on mute right now.
Wow, okay. Thank you Hector, I appreciate that. It's, the event is four to nine at the community center. There'll be 15 vendors, five food trucks, there'll be a DJ, and lots of fun announcements and, and surprises throughout the day. So it looks like it's going to be a very well attended event and I'm very, very excited for this to come to Talent.
Thank you. On November 26th, there will be a holiday market at Town Elementary School. Then our tree lighting on December 2nd, and the response so far, that has been quite, quite above than, above that what we expected. So do expect a fun time on December 2nd in front of the tree lighting at Town Hall. And December 3rd, it will be our annual leaf pickup at City Hall. And as a friendly reminder to all listening and our councilors, November 24th and 25th, city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving, for the Thanksgiving holiday.
Great.
And lastly, just really quick, this has been, and I, and I don't like to use the word viral, but I think it's quite suitable in this case. The, we did post a notice on our Talent City of Town Police Department Facebook page and the city page, and it's received well over 15,000 impressions and I think it's KTVL, a local news station, and then a station out of Portland have picked up the story. So you know, Town's making news for, for this cuddly yet quite dangerous, I think I should say, bear. So there is a bear in the following areas of Summer Place, Creole Road, and Talon Avenue near Lithia Way.
It was in my yard two nights ago.
Can we go back to the list really quick? Where you had the announcements? Oh, great. Okay, I, I wanted to make sure that one of the ones that the holiday market was on there, but you got it. So thank you so much. And then Council Pestejo?
Yeah, just an announcement for those who don't already know, our very own flywheel bicycles is having their opening this Saturday, and there's a food truck and they have beverages and I'm really looking forward to having them around again.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, thank you everybody, and thank you Hector. These community announcements are really great. The next item on the agenda, speakers heard on non-agenda item. Do we have any speaker request forms?
Mayor, as of 6:30 this evening, there were no speakers signed up prior to the meeting, but I do see that there's a hand raised in our attendees.
Okay. Go ahead and bring him forward and Chris, state your name and city for the record.
Chris Lowes, City of Phoenix. Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations to you, and also congrats to Mark Anderson for an extremely close election for Talent Mayor. There were, I guess, a separation currently about 27 votes. With more updates to come, about half the Talent residents or voters want one of Marcus Mayor and half want you as Mayor. It was exciting, close race. And just wonder if maybe you'll make some, maybe make announcement about some changes you may make in how things are done in Talent to accommodate half the voters that want a Marcus Mayor. And secondly, just want to correct one thing. I saw a Facebook post where you said that Mark does support urban renewal. But it was a little bit misleading that he doesn't support the current iteration of the talent urban renewal is working to be proposed for the vote, I guess, in May. I think like most voters in Talent, he's never really in favor of the current, I said, iteration of the talent or renewal plan. Just wanted to straighten that out and just to say again, congrats to you and congrats to Mark. Thanks a lot. Bye bye.
Okay, anybody else before? Great. Okay, the next item on the agenda is department reports, item 6.1. Staff?
Yes, the department report is detailed in the agenda packet, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions on specific items.
Anybody have any questions? What was, Council Penamorif?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding my hand button. Yeah, so on the, the grants report, which is very nice. Is, I noticed there aren't any dates on that. And I'm, I'm trying to remember if there was some color coding as far as what was new and what wasn't new, but what I was gonna ask for is whether we could just have some dates. You know, like if there's an award, what the date was, just to keep track of what's new and what's, what's been there for a while. That would, that would help me.
Yeah, absolutely. I think I have on there right now dates of when the grants run out, but I will go ahead and add dates of when we were awarded them as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thanks for the staff reports there. You guys do such a really good job with them and I'm really thankful for them. Sorry, I'm lost on my agenda here. I've got to scroll back. Alright, so the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And it's acknowledgement of planning commission meeting minutes of August 23rd, acknowledgement of planning commission meeting minutes of September 27th, agreement for the Greenway pathway. And the noise permit for the El Mercadito event. Is there anything that we want to discuss, bring out of the consent agenda for discussion? Alright, has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? Any comments or edits? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Council Penamorif?
I moved to approve the consent calendar.
I think I saw Council Byers second that, is that right? You're muted.
Second.
Yeah. So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Penamorif?
Yes.
Councilor Pestejo?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you Hector. The next item on the agenda is item number eight. Point one from the unfinished business resolution 22-050-r on system development charges increase. Staff report?
Yeah, this is a continuation of a discussion that we started last city council meeting. This resolution would increase our SDCs based off of the construction cost inflation index. This is using the Seattle index through engineering news and review. And we're recommending that the adjustment, since it is a large adjustment, be distributed across a six month period. The first half hidden in January 1 and the second half hidden in July.
Any questions? Jordan, just as a reminder, when was the last time we raised the SDCs?
We last time raised the SDCs in July 2019. Based off of the March 2019 index.
Got it, okay. Alright. Without any further questions, I'll entertain a motion. Council Clark?
I moved to adopt resolution 2022-050-r authorizing the increase of the system development charges based on inflation adjustments from the ENR index from March 1st, 2019 to March 1st, 2022, and repealing resolution number 2019-993-r.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-050-r authorizing the increase of the system development charges based on inflation adjustments from the ENR index from March 1, 2019 to March 1, 2022, and repealing resolution number Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Penamorif?
Yes.
Councilor Pestejo?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item 8.2. It's a resolution on affordable construction excise taxes for Almeida fire rebuild. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment to declare that there is a potential conflict of interest in that I owned a piece of property that burned during the Almeida fire and have not rebuilt yet. Anybody else? Councilor Penamorif?
Yes, I'd like also to declare a potential conflict of interest. I own property in the Burn Scar and I have not completed my rebuild yet.
Alright. So this is resolution 2020-22-051-r on affordable construction excise tax for Almeida fire rebuild staff?
Yes, so this is also a continuation over from our last council meeting. The city right now, we are exempting any rebuild from the affordable housing CET. The construction excise tax is a 1% tax based off of the construction cost that goes towards affordable housing here in Talent. What this resolution does is it documents that practice, and then it applies a sunset date when that exemption will no longer apply.
Any questions?
Answering questions, thank you Mayor.
The benefit of starting an item in one meeting and carrying it over to another meeting. So if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion. Council Clark?
We have a study session coming up on something, don't we? Is this not it?
This, this topic could, could apply to the study session. You know, at this study session, we're really gonna drill into the data of our rebuild to understand how many properties are still not yet rebuilt. How many of those properties are still owned by the person that owned them during the fire? As well as just some other facts that we can really understand how our policy decisions today could impact the rest of the, of the rebuild. It will be focused really on that zoning non-conformance, which is the next agenda item. Really looking at kind of the different density numbers that might occur. But I will say for this affordable housing CET, I know council has expressed historically that, you know, their intention was really to support those who lost their homes in the fire itself. So if council wanted to wait on making this decision until that data comes before you all, there is no time pressure on this resolution.
Any further comments, Council Clark?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Council Byers?
Thank you. Yeah, I totally see the reasoning behind this motion, but I would like to wait until I have solid numbers in front of me to base my decision on.
Okay. So this, based on what we've heard so far, it can go one of two ways, and that would be to table it or postpone. Or a, someone making the, the potential motion, or some other variation. So if there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion. Council Clark?
I moved to postpone this agenda item until after the study session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone item 8.2, resolution 22-051-r on affordable construction excise tax for Almeida fire rebuild until after the study session. Jordan, just, just for clarification, because I hadn't heard about the study session yet, I don't think. What is the date scheduled for the study session?
Yeah, that's scheduled for December 7th.
Okay, and that's a regular meeting night, isn't it?
That is, that'll be right before our council meeting. And I will say, just to counsel, my hope is that we can make a determination on this agenda item in the next, before the end of the year. And so we have, you know, at least two scheduled meetings left before that time.
I think because it's a land use, I think we have to, I think we have to apply a date certain anyway. So I would ask for a friendly amendment to a date certain. Council Clark?
Yeah, I moved to amend the motion to say postpone to the next regular meeting.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone resolution 2022-051-r approving exemption of residential, commercial, and industrial rebuild of the affordable housing instruction excise tax to the next regular meeting. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Councilor Penamorif?
Yes.
Councilor Pestejo?
Yes.
Councilor Byers?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you Hector. Item 8.3 is resolution 22-052-r on zoning non-conformance for Almeida fire rebuild. And at this time, I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest for my ownership of a building, a lot, excuse me, residential lot in the Fire Scar. Councilor Penamorif?
Yeah, I just had to, I, I love this slide, the way you said like, hold on. But yes, I too have a potential conflict of interest due to owning land in, in the Burn Scar.
I'm looking forward to that. Classification coming through. Okay, staff report?
Yeah, so similar to the last two agenda items, this is the continuance from our last city council meeting. This is for zoning non-conformance practice where we are allowing folks to rebuild their single family detached homes that they lost in the fire. Even when they're in a zoning area that no longer allows for single family detached. My recommendation to council is to hold off on taking a bill on this matter until the study session on December 7th. We'll share some more details and data so we can fully understand the impact of any policy decisions or changes on the rebuild progress.
Any questions of staff? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Council Clark, you're doing all the heavy lifting tonight.
Well, I just practiced up, so.
Well done, sir. Well done.
I move to postpone Resolution 22-052-R on zoning non-conformance for Almeida fire rebuild until the next regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone Resolution 22-052-R on zoning non-conformance for Almeida fire rebuild until the next regular meeting. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Clark?
Yeah.
Counsel. Counselor Penemir.
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
And Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. All right, Item 9.1 on the agenda is review of election certification process. Staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to hand this one over to Hector.
Mayor, what you see in front of you, counsel, what you see in front of you today is just a, a quick overview of what to expect as the election wraps up. And one thing that we have been, we've been receiving calls and people, residents trying to figure out, you know, who is actually counting the ballots from the November 8th election. And a little bit of clarity there, that's done by the Jackson County Elections Office. And the process that they follow is in front of you, there's a, there's a, a variety of dates where they report back the results. And then the final certification, as we can see here, will be done on Tuesday, December 6th, when we receive a statement of the votes, a statement of votes here in Talent. Then the following council meeting, the city council reviews and canvases the results. And then we hope to conclude this process by swearing in and taking, and having the counselors who will be fulfilling their new, their new term in office on either December 21st or January 4th.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Hector. Appreciate the, the update.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is 9.2, Resolution 22-055-R on urban growth boundary amendment. Staff?
Yeah, I'd love to invite up our community development director, Kristin Mays, to report on this one.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is a resolution declaring the city council, that the city council's intent to initiate the amendment to the City of Talent Urban Renewal, Urban Growth Boundary and the comprehensive plan to add land to the city's urban reserve area, which would be, which we know as TA1, that will become parks and public facilities for, for the need, that will meet our parks and public facilities needs and employment. As you may recall, on June 1, 2022, the city council approved the conceptual master plan for this area that was required by our Talent Municipal Code prior to the review of the urban growth boundary. This project is a major urban growth boundary amendment initiated by the Phoenix Talent School District to add approximately 47.3 acres. Consisting of about 4.3 of those acres will be public road right-of-way and the 43-acre property, which is zoned exclusive farm and owned by the district, will then be amended to the city's comprehensive plan map to be mapped as public facilities, it's public facilities and civic. This project, if initiated, the next steps for this project will be to, once initiated, will go before the Joint Planning Commission with the city and Jackson County. And that is tentatively planned for January 12th. And then from there, it will go to City of Talent, City Council, go before you all to approve that recommendation from the planning commission and then go to the Jackson County Board of Commissioners. That would conclude my staff report. This is really just about an initiation for our amendment. It's kind of a formality for the city to go through.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Byers?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-053-R to initiate an amendment to the City of Talent Urban Growth Boundary and the comprehensive plan to add land to the city's urban reserve area, TA-1, or the city's 20-year parks and public facility needs and employment.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2022-053-R to initiate an amendment to the City of Talent Urban Growth Boundary and the comprehensive plan to add land to the city's urban reserve area, TA1, or the city's 20-year parks and public facilities needs and employment. Is there any questions? All right, I'm, I'm sorry, are there any further, is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penemir.
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. The next item on the agenda is, oh, my agenda closed. Item number 9.3 is the review of the capital improvement plan prioritized projects. Staff?
Yes, so at our last council meeting, right beforehand on the second, we held a study session and received feedback on our project prioritization for our capital planning process. Based off some of the feedback we heard that night, we have done some edits to our prioritized projects. Those edits include moving up the seismic retrofit of the Belmont 2 reservoir piping, incorporating the relocation of the tennis ball, tennis and pickleball courts to more closely follow our parks master plan, and then noting coordination with Jackson County on the Foss Road improvements. So up for you all tonight is just that final draft of those project prioritized projects, pardon me, looking for general approval from council tonight to move us to the next step of the process, which would be to calculate the cost of those projects, which our city engineer will do.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Pesezo?
I move to approve the project prior prioritization as amended for capital improvement planning.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the project prioritization as amended for capital improvement planning. Is there any discussion? Counsel Pesezo, do you wish to speak to your motion?
No.
Counsel Penamriff?
Yeah, I want to thank Jordan and the staff for incorporating those changes and, and putting together such a really great comprehensive report. Small question, the as amended was if we changed it today, right? Was that the intention of the as amended or the amendments that were made therein? Sorry, just a nerdy question.
My original intention was for if we want to make any changes tonight, however, I will interpret it based off the discussion we had as the amendments that were made based off of study session feedback.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penemir.
Yes.
Counselor Pesezo.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Hector. Next item on the agenda is 9.4, Presentation on Vehicle Inventory. Staff?
Yeah, I'd like to hand the mic over to Finance Director Tessa Delain to cover this topic.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening. I'm here to present to you a very high-level overview of City of Talent's fleet inventory as a first step in the process of developing a vehicle replacement strategy. We are not requesting anything tonight except to please remember this discussion when we come back to you in the spring with the 2023-24 annual budget. Please know that this is something that will not be solved within a single fiscal year. It will take much discussion and careful financial planning that will span over the course of several years. Next slide, please. The City of Talent owns a fleet of 19 cars, SUVs, and trucks for use by the following departments. We have 10 vehicles for police, eight for Public Works, and one for community development and administration. Next slide, please. Fleet fact, fleet facts, gonna say that one fast five times. Average age of our vehicles is 12 years. The oldest vehicle is over 22 years. The average mileage on an odometer is 83,000 miles. The highest mileage on an odometer is 212,000 miles. The average mile per gallon that we attain is 15.2 with two public works trucks averaging seven to eight miles per gallon. Only one vehicle in the fleet is fuel efficient. We have one hybrid. And over one-third of our fleet has been donated by other municipalities. We have 11 vehicles that we've purchased new. We have one that's been leased, six that have been donated to us used, and one that has been purchased used. Please note that this fleet does not include tractors or dump trucks. This is simply trucks and SUVs. And, and sedans. The next slide, please. So how often should we replace our fleet vehicles? First of all, at the point in time that, that results in optimal overall cost over the vehicle's life cycle, passenger vehicles should be, should be cycled regularly based upon age, runtime, or mileage. And light duty trucks should be cycled regularly based on age or mileage. Next slide, please. With our police department, we have 10 cars and SUVs. The average age of the vehicle is nine years. Our average mileage on the odometer is 88,000 miles. Please note that police, these cars often are based on runtime rather than mileage. Officers use their cars so they can reach the scene of an incident quickly, patrol the area, transport and temporarily detain subjects, suspects. Officers also use their cars as mobile offices. They use, the cars include their radios, their laptops, and other items while providing a visible deterrent to crime. Half of our PD's vehicles have been donated used to the City of Talent by other municipalities. Next slide, please.
Question?
You bet.
Did you define runtime for me?
Idling.
Okay.
That's what I've learned too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, police vehicles, current issues. This is not everything. This is the things that I've gleaned in the past week or two. In the year 2024, all police cars will need to replace all of their computers. And the current estimated cost for that is $23,000. So that's going to be a budgetary line item in the next year's budget. We have a 2014 Chevy Tahoe that's been donated by the City of Ashland. I do believe that it's not being used because the repair costs are too high. And we have a 2008 Dodge Charger that I do believe is in use that has been donated by the Sea of Medford, but the gas gauge doesn't work. Next slide, please. Public Works, we have eight trucks. The average age is 15 years. Average mileage is 105,000 miles. And Public Works employees use their vehicles for meter reading, parks maintenance, water main repairs, street maintenance and repairs, picking up materials and supplies, and for transportation between the various buildings and facilities within the City of Talent. Next slide, please. Current issues with Public Works vehicles. We have a 2000 F250 with a front end that can't be realigned. The air conditioning is non-functional and lacking an emergency radio, and the engine burns oil. We have a 2003 Chevy 1500 that needs a new steering wheel seat and driver's windows that fail to roll up. It's missing an emergency radio and it needs a new safety light. We have a 2004 Ford F-550 dump truck that's undersized. It's a three-yard dump, and I know that Public Works is looking for a five-yard dump truck. It doesn't have an emergency radio. It needs a new seat and safety lights. And 2004 Chevy 2500, we have a tailgate that needs replacement. We have a 2006 Ford F-350, transmission's losing its second gear, and it needs safety lights. And we have a 2008 Ford F-350 that had a replaced engine that was used the time. It's leaking oil. It needs a new seat, and the driver's window is starting to fail. Next slide, please. Community Development Administration, we have one vehicle that's on loan from Public Works. And actually, this truck didn't just come from Public Works. It originated from the police department, so it's gone through a couple of iterations. It's 14 years old. It's got 106,000 miles on it. And it's used for code enforcement or administration purposes. Next slide, please. This 2005 Toyota Tundra that's within community development. It's burning oil. Its exhaust system needs to be replaced, and the driver's side window is starting to fail. Admin, we currently are without a vehicle. Staff borrows vehicles from other departments or uses personal vehicles and is reimbursed at the IRS mileage rate. Next slide, please. Challenges for the next fiscal year and beyond. What we've learned is that purchase lead times for new vehicles are up to a year. Vehicle prices have risen dramatically due to inflation and availability. Parts prices, labor costs, and supply chain availability are also problematic. And gas prices, that we all know, are extremely inconsistent and are now coming down from an all-time high. Next slide, please. So what are the next steps? Right now, we're in the process of drafting a fleet replacement policy. There's a lot of data that needs to be collected. There's going to be a lot of discussion on this. We need to develop a financial plan to pay for future replacements of vehicles. We're going to have to centralize fleet data. We need to collect and measure maintenance costs, vehicle replacement costs, mileage, depreciation. We need to foster collaboration between the City of Talent staff, the Budget Committee, and the City Council in order to bring Talent's fleet up to standard. And finally, we need to choose the best fleet technology for the City of Talent. We look, we need to look forward to improving safety and reducing Talent's carbon footprint by using hybrid or electric-powered vehicles and trucks whenever possible. Any questions?
Counsel Penamriff?
Thanks, Tessa. That was so great, and I really appreciate going to the trouble of, of taking photographs of, of the vehicles involved. I think that really helped my comprehension. My question has to do with, as far as going green on the fleet. Is, are there, you know, when you're figuring out the costs, are there advantages, additional advantages to that? Grants and things and rebates and incentives for buying the hybrids or electrical vehicles?
We haven't gotten to that point yet. However, we're going to look into every possible way of financing it and looking for what's the best. We do need to reduce our carbon footprint. I mean, especially when you see that a vehicle may have only six to seven miles per gallon. Like, we have two, two, two trucks down at Public Works that earn six to seven miles per gallon. That's pretty bad. This is, looking at this piece is probably on the tail end. Right now, we're working on gathering their information, documenting everything we possibly can, looking at, you know, what is, what are the replacement costs? What, how much the, if we had to sell, sell these items immediately, you know, what will we get for it? What's the cost of insurance? There's so many variables involved in the strategy, but right now, it's collecting the data and that's going to help us best come up with the best strategy. and um that's gonna help us best come up with the best strategy for the City of Talent.
Super. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, and thank you very much.
Was my count off? Was that all the the vehicles that you reviewed? Um, was that all of our vehicles?
That do not include, like, the, that's, yes. That's like the sedans, SUVs, and pickup trucks. And I think I included the three-yard dump that's in there, and that's, I think it's an F three fifty or an F four fifty. It's a smaller truck.
So the newest truck we have is a two thousand eight? I mean, the newest vehicle we have is a two thousand eight? I mean, did I?
No. If Jen's on, she, she can attest to that. I think she's got the newest vehicle. It's a hybrid SUV. And I do believe it's just a few years old. But I, uh, once we pull all the data together, we can share that with you, so you can actually see each vehicle and all, all of the different stats associated with it. Right now, this is very preliminary.
Great. Having um a replacement schedule is great.
We definitely need to take it, take a look at that and then um, and have a plan. And be fiscally responsible while we do it.
One more question I have. Uh, Jordan, maybe you know the answer to this is, uh, 'cause I can't recall. Is there um, is there a call for uh going?
Let's see, let me rephrase the question. Is there uh language in our Clean Energy Action Plan that will allow us to just start purchasing, you know, that would justify us start just, just purchasing green vehicles?
Yeah, I'd have to review the exact language. Um, but the Clean Action Energy Plan does call for us to prioritize replacing our fleet with greener technology.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Good, 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 good. Great. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Tessa. Great work. Um, and great management uh on both yours and Jordan's part. We look, sure, like, uh, a replacement schedule is, is fantastic. All right. I don't know what is happening with my agenda here, but it keeps closing. So one second. Sorry, I'm having trouble with my computer a little bit here. There we go. Um, all right. So the next item is other business and future agenda items. Anybody have any other business or future agenda? Jordan?
Yeah, I just wanna let council know as well as folks in the audience, December will be our urban renewal focused month. Um, where the majority of city council topic items and study sessions will be centered around a rebuild and urban renewal plan um changes before council gets ready to uh send the proposal off to the public review process.
Great. Uh, anybody else? Alrighty. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is our executive session is um. Anne Marie here yet?
You know, I gave her a text and I'll give her a call as well. Um, but you all should have in your inboxes a link to that executive session. And Hector, if you could paste that link in the chat to the panelists as well. And Mayor, unfortunately, the script I have for you to read, my computer is currently frozen. Um, but Hector, if you could also put the PowerPoint that shows the language of why we're entering executive session, could do the trick.
Thank you. The council has entered an executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero parentheses two, parentheses I. To review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry out on labor negotiations. Uh, so with that, you'll find a link in the chat, and I guess we're, we're headed over there.
Yes, and if um attendees wanna just stay here in this meeting, we will return to this meeting um for open discussion.
Everybody here? Okay, so we're back in regular session. We have reconvened into the public meeting. There were no decisions made and in other words, there's no motion to be made outside of this our executive session. And with that, I'll just go ahead and adjourn the meeting unless unless somebody wants to extend it. Jordan, do you have any need for an extension? All right, let's go ahead and adjourn the meeting at what is it 9:36?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, council. Thank you all the folks who hung on.
Thank you, Jordan.
Have a good night, all.
Good night, chief.